There's a binder labeled "Public Copy Board Materials" at the table as you enter the room. Meeting agendas are also available there. Public may also access board agendas on our district website, District Info, School Board, Board Book. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
We have an addition. Well, that's on the consent. Oh, actually, the roll call. Let the record indicate that everybody's here tonight. Now we go to the agenda. Motion by Colbert Dahl. Second by Dr. Westy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Presentation of Truth and Taxation. Andrea.
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's Truth and Taxation meeting for the 25 Pay 26 Levy. I'll be reviewing the property tax timeline, our current budget for 2526, and then the proposed 25 Pay 26 Levy. I feel like I'm going to be jumbling all night. And then we'll have a time if you have any questions. Our property tax timeline, at the September 22nd, 2025 school board meeting, I presented the proposed levy. At that time, I asked for the school board to certify it at maximum, which you did. At that time, the certification was at maximum, which looked very high. It was $5,860,227. It was a 20% increase. I was waiting for the Department of Education to be making adjustments to the levy. They had to make manual adjustments to our debt calculation due to our consolidation. It was in delay due to retirements at MDE, so they were behind in that process. We were also waiting for our lease levy to be reviewed and then approved. In November 2025, the county auditor mailed notices of our proposed property taxes to our taxpayers. So everyone has received those at their homes and residences. And then tonight is our Truth and Taxation meeting. And then tonight, I will also ask the school board to certify the final pay 2026 levy. During the 2026 calendar year is when our county auditor collects all of the property taxes, which are typically paid in May and October by property owners. This revenue is then collected, and it is used by our school district for the 2627 cycle for the year. The levy makes up around 8.3% of our total $52 million revenue in our districts. So tonight, the revenue for the pay 26 would be $4,389,352 for the levy. The revenue sources that affect the levy are in different funds. They're in Fund 1, 4, 7, and 47. Those are the levy sources, the funds that are affected by the levy. Our Fund 1, 3, and 5 are considered the general fund by the state of Minnesota. Keep in mind, we have always had those segregated here. As Fund 1 is our general fund, Fund 3 is transportation, and Fund 5 is capital expenses. I'm sorry, I keep clicking this.
It just jumped on you.
Yeah, it's very sensitive. So there is our forecasted revenue for 2526. We also have local sources for revenue too, and then we receive federal and state aid. At our June 23rd, 2025 meeting, the school board adopted the 2526 budget with these proposed revenues of $52,714,215. And then you also approved the proposed expenditures of $53,128,371 throughout the different funds. From last year's payable levy for the 2025 levy, it was at $4,821,725. This year, pending for approval right now, it'll be $4,389,352. That's a decrease, so our taxpayers will be seeing a decrease of 8.9%. So we will have a decrease to our levy. I did some comparisons to local-sized districts in our area. So we have, we're kind of in the middle between Hibbing and Coquay. So that was the two. Grand Rapids has quite a large levy of over $15 million. But we're pretty much right in the middle between Hibbing and Coquay for ADM. Compared to statewide, like-sized districts, our levy is very small. So throughout the state, other districts are having very large levies with their taxpayers. The closest one with ADM would be Winona, and their levy is at $13,236,281. The levy is made up of different components. As you can see, we have local levy and state aid on one part of the document, and then we also have just local levy revenue. We had a decrease in our long-term facilities maintenance levy and state aid. Our district buildings, our average age has decreased now as we have newer buildings. So we have the newer buildings, so we have a decrease right now in our long-term facility maintenance. Adjustments are made throughout time, so we would probably, we might have adjustments going forward. Revenue just based from the local levy only, our reemployment insurance. So you'll see a decrease there. Reemployment insurance is an approximation we have to make, and then it gets adjusted for actual, but we're approximating staff members that would be using unemployment that would affect, might have been employed by us or would have been employed by us during their periods of time. This is not summer employment, unemployment. This is not summer unemployment. This is the other unemployment. So this could be doing, qualifying for a layoff from a different employer, but they also worked from us during their look-back periods, but this is not summer unemployment. Another area of the change would be the OPEB, so Other Post-Employment Benefits. So the debt payments are decreasing, so the debt is being paid off, therefore, the levy amount is decreasing. We are a tachinate district, so we receive tachinate production credits. What tachinate production credit does is it actually decreases the amount for the taxpayer. So it reduces the taxpayer's obligation. It's not additional revenue that the district is receiving, but it's replacing what the revenue would be from property owners. So keep in mind, it's a three-year average, and it didn't really change from the previous year. Will it change going forward based on the local mine that is currently laid off and not producing? So we'll be watching that for future, but, so that's something that we have to keep in mind as planning goes on. So finally, our pay 26 levy is $4,389,352. I keep saying that wrong. $4,389,352. Like I said, it's a decrease from the previous year. Any questions?
What does that play out to the taxpayers in their approximately a percentage per household? Do you know?
You know, it really just bases on your market value too. Maybe if your market value went up.
Fifty.
Yeah, you know, you might, it wouldn't be as much. I personally don't remember what my decrease is. So, but yeah, it's really based on your market values of your homes too.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry?
Is there any other questions for Andrea? Okay.
And then I would need tonight for you to vote to pass the levy.
Can I get a motion to pass the levy as presented? So moved. Motion by Ridden.
I'll second.
Second by Bonner. Any discussion? Hearing none. Is this roll call?
Might as well.
Yeah. Okay. Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Director Ridden?
Yes.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Colbert Dahl?
Yes.
Director Johansson, yes?
Director Westby?
Yes.
Director Westby?
Yes.
Director Bonner?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Okay, recognition of visitor input. I didn't have anybody sign up ahead of time. Is there anybody in the audience that would speak? Good. Say your name.
I want to read you.
Okay, you got a timer, Lisa?
Yep.
Okay. This is the first newly consolidated school district in the state of Minnesota in the past 15 years. And it's probably one of the rarest school consolidations which has occurred, not because of financial struggles. Both school districts were in solid financial shape, but because of a genuine interest to improve the quality of education the students were receiving. That's from your website. You took two school districts that were in solid financial shape and had reserves. I think it was about $8,021,000. And you're down to one and a half. You've got to raise the levy. You've got to cut another $1 million off your budget. Superintendent last week, or two weeks ago, said that you eliminated $1.56 million in overhead and redundancies by consolidating. Okay, so now you've consolidated, same tax base, correct? Same districts, same tax base between the two, and they were both financially solid. You've eliminated a million and a half dollars in costs. And you spent about $6.5 to $7.00 million in reserves that you inherited from those school districts. And you cut $2.5 million last year. And you're going to have to cut another million this year, which I don't think is a million. I think it's probably closer to two. But we'll find out about that. I keep hearing about the inflation thing. Have any of you heard of inflation? The school district's been dealing with it forever. Everybody talks about this inflation like funding hasn't kept up with inflation. You all know this. It's been happening for the last 20 years. It's not like it's a surprise and, oh my God, we need money now because funding hasn't kept up with inflation. It's been going on forever. It's not a new concept. I made three predictions for you before, and they're all came true, but I'll take the risk of going three for four. I'm going to make a prediction that sometime in January, February, your superintendent is going to stand up for the school board and say, "School board members, my work here is done. I've decided to move on to other pursuits or other careers of retirement, write a book, go on a speaking tour," whatever he's going to do. He's been applying for jobs for the last two years around the state. He's looking for somewhere else to go. He doesn't want to be around when this crashes. You are getting dangerously close to statutory operating debt. He's got a PhD on his resume. He doesn't want an SOD on his resume. So I would guess that he's going to volunteer to lead a search committee for interviews, try to find new superintendent for you. I would say the client is off. And you can talk about me. I agree.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board?
Hi, I'm David Fiedor. My son Morgan, he's a fifth grader here. Sheena Stefanic and Bobby Spry have been working with us on a 504 plan for him, for his ADHD. I think they've been doing a great job, but there's no guidance counselor in the building to help them out, which I think is crazy. So Sheena's running two schools right now without a guidance counselor. You guys probably know, but if you look at the state law for guidance counselors, they say highly recommended that you have a guidance counselor, one guidance counselor for every 250 students. Just looking at the website from what, by my count, we've got three guidance counselors for about 2,100 students. So that would be, I don't know, one for every, you know, for 700 students. So, you know, we're less than a third in terms of the recommended number of guidance counselors. I'm just wondering, like, is there a plan to hire guidance counselors? Because Sheena, right now, I mean, I don't know realistically how you can run two schools and write a 504 plan. That's what a guidance counselor does. But she doesn't have a guidance counselor. That's crazy. So what, is there a plan to get one?
There isn't any back and forth in public input. It's just you addressing the board.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm not sure what you're saying.
What he's saying is, we can't interact with you. It's your time to speak to us and then...
That's it. Okay.
Yeah, you voice your concerns to us.
Hopefully in your head, since you can't talk out loud. You're thinking about this. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board? Okay, moving along. Consent agenda, there is one add. We shall have it in front of us as a resignation for...
Yeah.
Kim Fleischer as a resignation. We'll put that at 5.15. So with that added, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
As amended.
As amended. Was that a motion, Tim?
Yes.
I'm second.
Motion by Ridden, second by Westby. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passed unanimously. 6.1 Youth Leadership Academy Experience.
Good evening, board. Thank you for having us. I'm Cassandra Haney. I am the Positive Community Norms Grant Coordinator for Rock Ridge Public Schools. Taryn Greiner is the Student Group Leader for CORE. CORE is one of the many things that I do in preventing student substance use. So, I'm sorry, let me start over. The Positive Community Norms Grant is focused on the primary prevention of tobacco, alcohol, and cannabis at Rock Ridge. One of the many things that we do under that grant is work with a student group that was started at the beginning of the grant. So what that has become is creating our range every day for CORE. These students work on building their own leadership skills. They work on leadership skills with their peers. They also provide a lot of opportunities for students within Rock Ridge. If you read what I handed you that explains what CORE is, it talks a lot about inclusion. So what that looks like is, for example, this year before homecoming, we know that a lot of students who want to take part in things struggle with transportation. So they hosted an event where kids could just stay after school and then attend the football game. And food was provided, so that was very easy for whoever wanted to take part in homecoming to be able to participate. So we recently attended the Youth Leadership Academy. While there, students were able to participate in a photographic journalist activity that we're about to show you. Students took pictures that were taken at YLA and put it into a slideshow. Once that's done, they'll talk a little bit more. I also just want to introduce the three of them. I have Jamie Jackson, our president, Keprah Haney, and our publicist, Kate Aguilar. Really, the caliber of these students is incredibly high. Just to kind of call out our past president, Jace Matuzak was our president for three years. This year, he's a senior, and he decided not to run for president again, even though he likely would have gotten it because he thought it would be better handed down to somebody who wasn't a senior and to give other students the opportunity to run and for sustainability of the work that they do. So actually, the majority of our officers are not seniors, which is pretty wonderful to see. So if you want to play the slideshow, and then the students will take over. Yeah, I think if you click on autoplay and then present.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, autoplay, that works. We'll see. Sorry. Yeah, so if you click on autoplay, there you go.
Hello, I'm a sophomore at Rock Ridge, and I've been a part of CORE since the very start of my freshman year. I'm going to be telling you about the amazing experience that is YLA. YLA is the Youth Leadership Academy hosted by the Department of Human Services BHA, in which CORE and alike clubs across nine different schools attend every year during early November. Although I did not personally attend this year due to prior commitments, I am speaking with the support of my peers who did. Throughout the day at Base Camp Fort Snelling, our CORE group was encouraged to step away and write an answer to the question, "When have you been inspired to lead?" Then, our students' wonderful answers were made into an incredibly moving slideshow, which you saw within Ms. Cassandra Haney's presentation. Our students also attended several breakout sessions, focused on creating leadership in themselves as well as fellow students outside of our club. Some of our breakouts included finding out what type of leader you are, what that means for you, and how you can apply your leadership to our school. Another breakout session dove into what our students want to bring back to their communities on an individual level. Leaving our breakouts, we got the chance to listen to a very inspiring presentation by John Nolte, an American photographer and peace activist. Overall, the Youth Leadership Academy is an incredibly important part of us growing as leaders, both during and after our time at Rock Ridge, which our students continue to look forward to as each year passes. This academy takes on hundreds of leaders yearly and makes an impact on each and every one of them. We, as a group, look forward to next year and hope to continue to be able to grow our leadership skills.
Keprah?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Keprah Haney, and I am the president of CORE. As you heard from Mrs. Haney, CORE is an amazing opportunity for emerging leaders in Rock Ridge. CORE and all of our activities are made possible by the school's PCN grant, but that grant cycle ends this upcoming June. So we are asking you to consider making CORE a standing club so that we can fundraise to support CORE and continue our club activities after the grant cycle has ended. And that's all I have to say to now.
Thank you.
My name is Kate. I'm the publicist for CORE. And some of the upcoming events CORE is putting together is the Winter Carnival, which we are putting together winter activities throughout the day for students and forming relationships and a sense of belonging between students and teachers. And then we're putting together leadership training. Where CORE students are going into their life future classes and teaching them everything we learned at YLA to our junior high students and showing them the different ways that they can apply their own unique leadership skills here at Rock Ridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
I just want to say, it made me a little teary-eyed. It was really beautiful. And I'm really proud of all of you. You did, you spoke so well and did so well. And I just can't wait to see what the future brings for all of you. And I can say that you guys are why we are here too, because we want to see you succeed. So, great job.
Thank you.
Great job. Cassandra, is that video available?
Yeah, I can check.
Thank you. Great job. All right, next up, 6.2 North Star Elementary Principal Report. Gina?
Good evening. Lots of things going on at North Star. I know the holiday season is busy for everybody. We continue to, I know our fourth grade has been, was very busy with raking in the fall. Now we're on to shoveling and cleaning up garbage if we see it. I know the fourth graders have been very busy shoveling the neighbors and the residents around. You, if you had come to North Star any of these days, you would see our fifth grade classes have been using the workshop a lot more lately. I think there was an article in our latest newspaper about some of the projects that they have been working on and creating their own books right in the workshop with the use of those tools. So that was neat to see. We have fourth graders and fifth graders that are attending some activities, crafts, making cookies, decorating at Edgewood. So our students are kind of sharing their, I don't know, what do you call it, their...
Talents?
Yeah, well, their talents and their happiness and joy of the season with our elders that are in the community out at Edgewood. So that's nice to see. I think it brings joy to not only our kids, but also the residents at Edgewood too. We had our band concert. Ms. Sante calls it an informant's, but the sixth graders did a wonderful job last week in their little band informant's. And we have, coming up on the 19th, the rest of our grade levels, 3, 4, and 5, will have their concert, winter concert for our families. So they're working hard at that. And we have some staff members, particularly Maria Padresay and Nikki Kern, that started a giving tree at North Star Elementary for our North Star kids. Like, there were a few families and kids in our North Star that were a little less fortunate. So they started a giving tree for some of our students right at... So they started a giving tree for some of our students right at North Star, so giving back to our own, working and helping each other, so. Uh, the literacy lead, I don't know if I've talked about her before, but Sally White, um, our district literacy lead that comes out of the Northeast Service Corp., has been in the building, I want to say, four or five times. Um, she has met with every grade level and done some training and done some planning as far as literacy blocks, um, some progress monitoring and um figuring out what we can do that to help the kids better or more efficiently. Um, and I've had some very positive feedback from the staff on that, so I'm pretty excited that she's still coming. We have her planned out through the rest of the year um to come in. Teachers can sign up to meet with her. She can go into the classroom and help them. So multiple ways that she's coming in to help, um, especially with literacy. We also have um Alex Hayes, um, we call him Xander. Uh, he, I know I talked about him before, that we had hired him for the Ojibwe language. Um, but he finally has like a set schedule where he is in our building at North Star two days a week, and he is hitting every single class now. Um, where his schedule first started out where we were hitting just a few classes and they could sign up for it, but we figured uh, looking at what he had available and his expertise, we have incorporated it into all of our classrooms. So he's doing some Ojibwe language, um, so some Ojibwe traditions and culture in all of our classrooms at least once a week for a half an hour-ish, so that's kind of, kind of exciting for those kids too. Um, lastly, I know I won't be here for North Star um for a few more cycles here, but wanted to let you know that they have some um skating planned. Uh, some of the North Star classes are going skating down at the ITMEC. We have that planned. And our sixth grade also has their um ski days planned to take them out to Giants Ridge skiing. I know that's an annual thing, so. Otherwise, just holiday bustle in the hallways, so, yeah. Any questions for me?
Any question for Sheena?
No.
Great, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, six point three, Superintendent Report, Dr. Schmidt.
I have one thing for the board to update them. You've heard this before, so this is also primarily also for the audience and those who are watching on TV. You've been waiting for it. You've been wondering, when are the information dialogue and listening sessions starting? Tomorrow. So if you're in Gilbert, ninth and fifteenth, Evolith, tenth and sixteenth, Virginia, eleventh and eighteenth. So we have eighteen scheduled, two in each town, so it's fair. Three a day, so there's a nine o'clock session, there's a noon session, there is a five o'clock session. They're all exactly the same. So if you're in the community, you can go to any one of these eighteen community meetings. They're all gonna be the same. Evolith, Gilbert, or Virginia, they're all the same. In Gilbert, we're meeting at the community center, the auditorium. In Evolith, we're meeting at the council chambers. And in Virginia, we're meeting at the North Star. So whether there's one or twenty people there, whether it's snowing or not snowing, we'll be there. So we'd love to hear input from the community, what they think about from the time of the consolidation to now. Did the board do what you thought they were going to do? And then also any other input or advice you would like to give the current school board. So that all starts tomorrow. That's it.
Do we have, like, how many um board members are gonna be at, at the meetings, or I'm just wondering, like, for our attendance?
Your decision as far as you want. I'm gonna do the same thing at each one of them. It'd be great to have a board member um be there.
That's good.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, since it's superintendent report, there, there's some rumors about um the land in Gilbert. Is there somebody in particular that's looking at that land in Gilbert? Has there been any meetings? Because I volunteered to be a part of um attending those meetings too. So I just want to make sure that if there's any meetings happening, I'd like to, I'd like to be invited so that um I can hear what's going on too.
Yeah, there was a Gilbert Town Hall. They did have a developer talk to them. So I have received a letter, which I would like to get the School Board, Buildings and Grounds Committee together before the holidays start and talk about what that letter contains. So you have received some information from somebody interested in that property, yes.
Right, thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Schmidt?
Nope.
Okay. Moving along, six point four, Treasuries Report. Can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Culver Dahl?
I'll second.
Second by Westby. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passing unanimously. Uh, seven point one, consider casting online votes for the MREAs twenty-twenty-six Board of Directors.
Do we have a ballot for that?
It's a online.
Do we each do it, or is it just one vote per school, Noel?
I put it on the agenda, so if you wanted to vote as a group, you could vote for that.
Okay.
Whoever you would like.
I've read, uh, myself, I've read the um, the three candidates, they're vying for one. I think they're vying for one. See, nor.
One teacher?
Yeah. They're all vying for the North's own teacher board seat. Yeah, and they're all qualified. Well, I know Shannon. I would make a motion to uh vote for Shannon. And I'll second. Motion by you, and support by Lotteger. Any discussion?
No, Shannon would be great.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, most passing unanimously. Small vote for Shannon.
Who's gonna do that voting?
We'll take care of it.
Okay.
Okay, um, meeting announcements. Their next regular meeting will be Monday, January twelfth at six o'clock at the Rock Ridge Admin Building. Two oh five, Progress Parkway. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Which will be the organizational, the organizational.
Yep, yep.
I will make a mo, uh, motion for.
I'll second German.
Motion by Lotteger, second by Westby. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion passing unanimously.